One, I just want to give board members a heads up that I am on call for work. So if I'm looking at my phone, I'm not tweeting or anything. I'm just.
Oh, no football game?
That's why, yeah. Well, there is a football game there. So if I have to step out, that's why. And I make a motion that we seat Liz Furia as a voting member this evening.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. First up this evening, we have continued site plan review for One Smith Road. And we have, if you can come up to the microphone here.
Mr. Lavelle? Come right up and sit, have a seat, please. Come right up and have a seat, Mr. Lavelle. Is it, and it's Jim, correct? Or James?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm Jim.
Yes, sir.
You have a letter in your file, signed by my grandson, asking for continuance to your next meeting. The explanation of that is that our firm has done all the groundwork out there, the property survey and topography and soils and so forth. And Jones and Beach will be doing the construction plans. There were detention basins involved and so forth, the drainage for the site. I myself did the test bits for those last week. So we're waiting on them. They believe they will have the plans all done by the 20th, which would be the deadline for your next month's meeting, I believe.
Wait.
Jones and Beach is doing it, not Beals?
Jones and Beach. They're doing the engineering part of it.
Okay.
We're the land surveying.
Just on the timing, just so you know, we need time for Glenn to review and for our engineering firm to review. So having it by a certain date doesn't necessarily mean, you know, we wouldn't be ready for that meeting because we need.
Is the 20th the deadline for that meeting, or is it not?
Well, we need more time before a meeting, like a couple of weeks. Right? Glenn, I mean, you can usually look at things pretty quickly, but TEC usually has a two-week turnaround.
When is your next meeting?
It is the 20th.
Yeah. But I'm saying if you're.
It is on the 20th?
Right. But if we receive something on the 20th.
It should be submitted a week before.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Which is now.
I was given the wrong information. So your meeting is the 20th.
The meeting's the 20th, but we always need time to look at something before.
Okay.
I mean, to give feedback, we can accept it, but we won't have time to look at it.
I will try and light a fire under their office.
Well, so do you have a, is there a letter in our packet asking for a continuance?
Not an official letter, no. I received an email.
So the discussion that we had, I think it was the last meeting or maybe the meeting before, was that this has been, this has been going on for a while and took some time to get things started, although activity on the site started without doing this process. And that we've been pretty accommodated in terms of.
Lenient.
Sinuation.
I understand that.
But have a lot of concerns about just, you know, letting this go on and on. And I know there have been concerns in the community about activity on the site when there isn't a plan. I'll open it up to the board.
You're still operating over there.
That's beyond my authority to, you know, but I understand. I don't want to say anything bad about Mike, but.
Oh, I'm not, I'm just asking if they're still active. It appears to me that they are when I drive by.
I'll speak to our client about it. Do the best I can.
So, I mean, I, you know, I'm curious what other board members think. I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable voting for another continuance. I just, I think we've, like you said, Kristen, we've really tried to make this work. And it's, and it's, I'm, I'm really struggling with this. I just, I'm very hesitant to keep this going.
And I think the discussion that we had when we voted last time to continue was that would be, there was general agreement that would be the last time, that we would continue without more information. Steph, are you gonna say something?
Yeah, I just, I definitely agree with the frustration, understand that. But is it our role to halt the process, or should it be the select board doing enforcement-type stuff?
Well, the planning process is our responsibility.
I know. I guess, would we, if there weren't, if there wasn't all of this history, would we normally let other applicants continue if they needed more time? I mean.
The answer to that is yes.
That's, I guess that's my hang-up, like, but there is all this history. I know, but.
I've never seen this come up like this before.
I just, I feel like that's kind of the select board's purview. Maybe, I could be wrong, I don't know.
As far as activity going on, on the site?
Yeah.
Without an approved site plan?
Yeah. I mean, we're just.
I don't disagree with you on that.
The only thing I can say is that usually the construction on the site starts after the approval of the plan.
Somebody's not getting that message.
I would just say for the select board, I mean, I've, I'm one person on the select board, but I've, you know, brought this to, you know, the attention of the select board. I am the chair. But, you know, my thought had been to, you know, allow this process to proceed, you know, rather than proceed to move for enforcement at the, at the select board level, because I thought that this was an appropriate process to unfold. But it has unfolded and unfolded and unfolded and refolded and unfolded. And here we are. With a deadline that was specifically given, you know, at the last meeting.
Okay.
So we have a couple of options. We can vote on a continuance. We can vote on a recommendation to the select board, an enforcement. We can do those things together, or we can separate those two things.
I don't know, maybe I'm just taking a softer approach than everyone, but I will say that his agent is here. So that's, they're not totally blowing us off, you know. They, they've got a plan, they're moving forward. It's not at the pace we wanted, but they're not totally ignoring us. Because if we stop what will have to happen, they'll have to start the whole process over. And if, that wouldn't really be productive. That would just be us kind of putting up roadblocks. Again, I know they have done a lot on their side that's frustrating too, but, yeah. I guess I would personally advocate to just, let's just move this process forward and try to get it done.
I'd just like to say one more thing. I appreciate your situation. I'll be on the phone to Christian Smith at Beals tomorrow and try and see if I can really get them going on this. I know we're all busy now. My office is crazy, and I'm sure Beals Associates are the same. But we need to get this done.
And, and just to be clear, I really appreciate that you're here. And my frustration is not with you, just to, just to be clear.
Okay.
And I think, I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Well, no, I, go ahead, you go.
I think Stephanie's absolutely right. If you take the emotion of the, out of it, of being frustrated and look at it in a productive way, I think Stephanie's right. Maybe we ought to consider.
So I make, I'll make a motion.
But I think.
Yeah, no, I was gonna just say that I tend to agree that while the timeframe's been long, you know, in my line of work, I have to deal with surveying companies, engineering companies and so forth. And it is a long, arduous process in some cases. And so it has been frustrating, but I, I tend to agree with you that we should continue it.
So my concern is the question that Mr. Finnan asked, you know, we don't have an answer to, which is, you know, is there activity that's ongoing? Because to me, that's important.
Our work on the site is completed at this point. It's in the hands of Beals Associates. We've done, like I said, we have a firm perimeter survey, we have the topography, we have locations of what's on the site at this point. And all that information has been sent to Beals.
I think, you mean the business?
He doesn't understand. Yeah, and I think what, you know, Mr. Finnan was, was asking was whether or not there was business activity that was ongoing, you know, during this process, because it had been requested, it had been requested that that not happen until.
When I was on the site personally, there was, there might have been another piece of equipment parked there, but Mike himself dug the test holes that I needed on that day. He was the only one there, no other activity. And when my survey crew was there, I don't believe there was any activity going on at that time.
Okay.
They were there a couple of different days.
So I'd like to make a motion that we continue this not to the November 20th, but to the December, is it 4th, meeting? But that they get the information that you need to us by around the 20th, so that there's enough time in there.
For the February meeting?
No, for the December 4th.
December 4th?
Yes.
If I get all your information.
But get the information in by, in two weeks.
If I get that information by the 20th, I can have it off to my engineer, our engineers, and have their response letters back to make proper comment and proper decisions.
And if you're still not ready by December 4th, I'm with Doug on this, it's, you know, we don't want this to go into the next year and the next year.
Does that seem reasonable to you?
It is.
Okay.
I think so.
But that, again, that's.
Hopefully, they can do it.
That they need the full two weeks. Like, if it comes in the, you know, we're closed on Fridays, so if it's not here the 20th, it's not, and doesn't get here till Monday of the following week, we're not going to get our review back in time for the December 4th meeting.
Typically, when I get information, it's electronically. So for me, it's just electronic, boom, it goes, it goes right off to Chris, Chris, so.
But you gotta get it.
Yeah.
You need to say your name and.
Can you, can you come to a microphone, please, sir? We have a remote right there. Just push the, push the button at the top until it turns green, sir. Thank you, Mr. Finnan.
It's green, it's green.
There you go.
Yep, there you go, my friend.
Christian Smith had a major operation. They do a ton of work for me. He's been out for three weeks. I went by there today. He's on a brace and he's limping around. All my stuff is delayed, for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, he's, he's in the office two days a week. We've spoken to him already.
All right, any other discussion before we, well, we don't, yeah.
I just want to make it very clear that it's two weeks prior to the second that we need that information. Okay, very good.
I made a motion, I don't think there was a second, yeah.
There was a motion, I haven't a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion before we vote to continue to December 4th? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience. I hope it's gonna work.
Um, I, I do want to ask the board, do you want to make a recommendation to the select board? It sounds like there's not maybe activity going on there right now, but do we want to do anything to ensure? Yeah, we're talking about the, like, if there's business going on right now.
There's any sales going on.
Separate, so separate from the planning process, there shouldn't be any business activity there right now. So I, I mean, I'm in favor of recommending that the select board sends, I guess it would go, I don't know if it would go to, and the business, both, or?
It would go to court enforcement. Depends what action they want, they want to take. I'm not going to speak for them.
Thoughts?
I mean, we could, I suppose, issue a letter that reiterates what I thought had been clear.
Yeah, I don't know if it, if it's.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not meeting again until Tuesday, so.
Are, yeah. Are we concerned there's activity going on? This gentleman said he didn't see any. Has anyone here seen any?
It's extremely sporadic. I drive by every day, and I'm probably say, two out of 10 times, I see someone there. The rest of the time, the pipe is across the driveway and nobody's there.
I'm with Mark.
That's what my witness, that's. That's my experience as well. Of, there's been a reduction, from my perspective, in the amount of material on the site, which indicates something's happened, because it didn't, that didn't evaporate.
Right.
But when I've driven by during regular hours, there has been nobody on site.
So even under the circumstances that we're at now, I think we've made ourselves very, very clear.
Yeah.
Under.
But is, but is that message getting to the person operating there?
Will that message get to the person?
The point of my motion was to make it all or nothing on the 4th, you know, like, that we should take action after that.
Yeah, but we kind of, we also had that discussion last time.
Are you not happy with that?
I just, well, I just feel like we've talked about this sort of amongst ourselves a lot. But we've, you know, the only concrete action that we can take right now is to send a letter saying, you know, here's what's been going on, just want to be clear, there should be no business activity on the site until there's an approved plan, period. And it's up to the select board if they want to do that or not, but I'd like to make the recommendation to the select board.
Glenn, do you think that's unreasonable?
No, I do not think that's an unreasonable.
Then I'm in four.
I'll, did you move?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Are you gonna draft a letter, or do you want Glenn?
What exactly is that motion?
Well, it's a recommendation to the select board, and they, and they will draft a letter if they choose.
Are you okay with that, Paul?
Yep.
Okay.
What exactly is your recommendation to the select board?
To write a letter to the landowner and the occupants that no business should be occurring on the site until there is an approved site plan.
I mean, I think that's something that the, I'll, I'll consult with our town administrator on it tomorrow, but I think our town administrator can issue that letter.
I agree.
With, particularly with that recommendation from the planning board.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think we have a motion and a second.
Thank you for being here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And just, I just.
That was Doug, and who's the second?
Doug and Doug.
Doug and Doug, thank you.
And on the continuance vote, I just want to make sure that we have the total right. I think Paul and myself were no's.
Yep.
I think that was it, okay.
Yep, I was gonna double down after we, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next up, Tanya Lane. So we've had a number of discussions about our recommendation to the planning board, or the select board, regarding whether or not the town should accept Tanya Lane. There's a draft letter in your packet that Glenn and I worked on that kind of lays out the situation. You know, what, what we've done, did a site walk, we asked TEC to evaluate what was installed, the developers' position, our feelings. But that we've, you know, we've done the due diligence, we've got advice from TEC and Steph, that the culverts, although not built to town standard, will not undermine the integrity of the drainage for the road. So interested in your feedback on this, but any other discussion before we make a decision about our recommendation to the select board?
I feel like I'm making recommendations on a letter to myself.
Right.
It's a little, it's a little self-dealing.
Stop saying.
Dear Paul, sincerely, Paul.
I think we need some more flattery in the letter.
I'm a little concerned at the last, or next to last paragraph about contacting owners regarding existing deficiencies and informing them about whose responsibility or it being theirs. It just seems that there's some inconsistency there. On the one hand, we're saying, okay, it doesn't meet our standard of the town, but it nevertheless, you know, will not impact the drainage. Then I'm not sure, I feel entirely comfortable sending out a letter that says, well, this is your responsibility. I don't know if I can make that, that call, or that determination, whose responsibility it might be.
Yeah, I mean, part of that comes from our road agent and his advice to the developer that if there, if something happens in the future, it is their responsibility, that's town policy, I guess. That's a responsibility to the landowner. They, for the most part, hold the permits. My understanding is that we think the drainage will be okay, but without proper coverage on some of the driveways, like we saw, some of them are already cracked above the pipes, and that's. I, I mean, I think part of the reason we put this in here is that, again, like, we've had a lot of discussion here, but the landowners, unless they're watching, have no idea what we've done or looked at or found.
Plus, are we setting a precedent by saying, you know, well, you didn't do it the right way, but it's okay? Like, what about the next one that comes along and doesn't do it the right way?
And that's our concern.
Yeah, I think it comes down to that. And at the end of the day, you know, no, we don't think it was done properly according to our process and our standards, but based on technical evaluations, are we comfortable saying to the town, this, you know, the drainage system is sound? It's not what we.
Right, but it.
There's no, like, threat to safety, public safety. The biggest threat is to the longevity of the driveway pavement, which in a residential setting, it's not really going to be a huge issue unless they have a ton of big trucks coming in and out of their driveway. It's not the ideal scenario. We would love them to be built with the proper cover and last, the driveway lasts longer without cracking, but they're not going to experience flooding or cave-ins or anything like that, in my opinion.
Paul, is your issue the fact that the residents have the responsibility for repair?
Well, I just don't know, you know, whose responsibility, you know, that might be.
So, wouldn't you, wouldn't you?
Residents might say it was someone else's responsibility.
So if, if we as a board are definitive in where we stand, don't you think that's?
You said the road agent said that's town policy. Is that written down anywhere?
Yes.
That we can, can we, like, be specific in the letter, like, according to regulation XYZ?
That's a good idea.
It's the same thing when any homeowner wants to replace their driveway or upgrade their driveway, the town is not responsible for putting a culvert in front of your house. If it fails, you have to replace it.
But there's something we can refer to.
Yeah.
Edit that.
There was, I just see a letter floating around.
But that, that's a lot more general than what this says, you know, which is that, you know, it's, well, suggesting that if, you know, that if, inform them as to the, if damage occurs as a result of the manner in which they were constructed, that it's, that's more specific than I think what the policy.
True. You're absolutely correct, yeah.
So that's why I'm uncomfortable with it. And then the language, existing deficiencies, it just is a bit, you know, vague for me to say, all right, we should contact, you know, the residents there and say, there are these existing deficiencies.
Well, listen, by, by letting them know that there are deficiencies, maybe they take action and go back to their developer, you know, or their builder, and say, hey, you, you didn't do this the right way.
We, we do have the full report from TEC with photographs and, you know, covered.
I mean, the planning board could decide, I suppose, to send that out to the residents and say, look, this is what we found as a planning board. I just feel a little uncomfortable doing that as a, you know, as a, as a letter from myself as chair.
Maybe we should provide more specific recommended language for this hypothetical letter.
And you can do that. And I think part of it is that the driveway permit process is the purview of the select board.
The permit process, that's a separate thing. I think there's some, that you say.
Well, and how they're installed.
You recommend the select board assess the current driveway permit and approval process. I don't have a problem with that. It's probably a good idea that we, that we do so.
So just to be clear, is your only concern, Paul, with, with that piece, the, the paragraph concerning the?
Yeah.
Resident, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Are you accepting?
Yeah, just need to state your name, please.
John Arnold, attorney at Oren Reno. I represent the developer, the original developer. Rob Healy is in the audience, and so is Wayne Morale. I just wanted to, I haven't seen the draft letter. I don't know if you have an extra copy that you could share.
In the packet, yeah.
So I will take a look at it, and I might have something more to say after I look at it. But I just wanted to comment on a couple of things I've, I've heard and maybe provide some clarity, or at least my opinion on them. The, the issue of the homeowners being responsible for maintaining the driveway culverts is an issue of state law. It's RSA 23613. So if you're looking to reference something, that statute would be the statute to reference. The statute says that homeowners, whoever owns the driveway or the culvert, is responsible for maintaining it, keeping it clear, et cetera. And if they don't, if there's an issue with that, the statute gives the town the authority to come in and make emergency repairs and collect those costs from the homeowner. So it's a statutory scheme. I think it might be reflected in your regulations as well, but it's.
It's reflected in our driveway permit. When you apply for a driveway permit, that RSA is in it.
Great. So, yeah, 23613. The other point I wanted to make, and it sounds like everybody on the board appreciates it, although I feel like there may have been some confusion about this in the past, is that each of the individual homeowners pulled driveway permits to put these in. Mr. Healy did not install these culverts, with the exception, I think, of one of the house lots that he retained for himself. But each one of the individual homeowners pulled these permits, hired contractors, or did the work themselves to put in their culverts. So my position, my position and my belief is that to the extent there's an issue with the depth of coverage over the culverts or how the culverts were installed, that's an issue of the town enforcing its driveway permits that it issued to these homeowners, not an issue of enforcing against Mr. Healy, who did not install these. The other point that I wanted to make, which is related to that and responsibility for these culverts, is that I know on the site walk, some of the, there was some commentary about bonding for the road. And I wanted to point out that the bonding for the road did not include the installation of these driveway culverts. And, or the periodic bond reductions that have occurred over the years. The town has specifically reviewed and signed off on all drainage work associated with the bond, so that even if those culverts had been part of the drainage system that was bonded, which they weren't, even if they had, the town's reviewed that, signed off on the work, released all the bond funds that were associated with the drainage for the entire project. The only bond that the town is still holding, the only portion of the bond the town is still holding is related to the finish coat of the pavement, the guardrails, and the signage. That's the only portion of the bond that the town has retained at this point. Everything else has been signed off on and released. And not directly it issued tonight, but just related to that point, Mr. Healy requested that remaining portion of the bond be released back in July of 2024. So far, there hasn't been any written response from the town on that request. The town is still holding that bond. So far, there hasn't been any written response from the town on that request. The town is still holding that bond. By statute, the town had thirty days to review that and to do inspections to see if the bond could be released. I don't believe that's ever been done. There's never been a written response. Mr. Healy has followed up several times to inquire on the status and the amount of the bond and the release of it, and he's not had a response to that. I think it's somewhat related because members on the board have raised the bond in question in the past, which is why I mention it, but I also think it's separate and distinct because the issue of the depth of coverage and the head walls that the, the board has raised in its last letter are not related to the bond. Never were related to the bond. So I want to take a look at the letter, if I may, in the audience, and I may have one or two more comments after having read it, but I just wanted to articulate to you our belief, and it sounds like from the comments I've heard that you guys maybe are on that track anyways, but my belief that Mr. Healy isn't responsible for this, we'd like the board to make a recommendation to the select board to accept the road. I think this is the last piece that Mr. Healy is looking to wrap up before going to the select board, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we give him a minute to read that, do we want to talk about the bond? And I think you had sent out somewhat recently the, the T E C's review of all the bond items.
Yes. I sent that out to you.
Yes.
So are there any questions on that? Are people ready to vote to release the remainder of the bond? There wasn't any outstanding issues on that, were there? No.
Not according to our engineers.
No, okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Good? Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second. Any discussion before we vote to release the remaining bond funds for Tanya Lane?
No, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to understand the comment that was made, that this goes back to July of two thousand twenty-four? Yep. And there's some suggestion that we had some, you know, obligation to
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you're completely aware of those obligations, and you have had this in your lap and discussed it at many different points and have never taken action on it, so. So look at me. No, I'm, I'm asking the question. I'm asking the question.
The point is that over that, that length of time, the board has been struggling with how to deal with the fact that there were inconsistencies in the review and the construction between both parties. And they've been trying to figure that out since.
And in, in that sense, there's been communication, although maybe not directly addressing that.
Okay. I mean, this was the first that I was hearing that comment, so, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going abstain.
Abstention? Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Finan?
Aye. Lovely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you for that vote and for the opportunity to read the letter. I've read the letter. I don't think I have much more to add. The only comment I wanted to make is to a sentence in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, the last sentence, the board is disappointed with the developer's stance. I'm sorry to hear that. It's certainly not the developer's intent to be difficult or disagreeable with the town. From his perspective, he's done a good development, has sold a number of lots, understand the town has issues with the driveway. If he had done the driveways, he would assume responsibility for that and fix it. So I just want to state that. There's no hard feelings on his part. He's sorry it's taken so long to get to this point. But I guess we're disappointed that the town's disappointed with his stance on that.
I would just like to inform Mr. Healy and yourself that I will be working on your escrow accounts. I've got that halfway completed, and I will be sending that out by the end of next week. You're welcome.
I just wanted to know, and I'm speaking for myself, not for the rest of the board, but I, I didn't, I think there was some confusion on my part and maybe other board members. I didn't realize that the developer didn't do the driveways. I wasn't fully comprehending that process. Now I understand it a lot better, so, you know, apologies on my end for that confusion and any
Even though I think it took us a while to get the two-way communication going to understand, because we, when we first started talking about it, we were looking at the plans.
Yeah.
And we were looking at what was installed, setting aside the driveway permits, but those two things didn't match, which we thought was the developer's responsibility and had, there had been a variance on the table that had been taken off the table, so we didn't understand why they were installed that way. But I think we've worked through as much
Is that typical? I'm, I'm like Stephanie. Is that typical that the developer doesn't do the culverts and the driveways? Or does it go both ways?
Depends if they're selling the lots or developing them themselves, I guess.
I think one silver lining is we've had a lesson learned and are reexamining our driveway permits.
Well, that's why we also, because the, the permit also very clearly states what our standards are, so whoever pulled the permit and installed them, again, setting aside what was on the plans, the permits said, you know, here are the town's standards, and that wasn't followed, so there were a couple of points of
The entity that approved those permits walked around that entire development many, many times, but never mentioned anything about the culverts.
And that, Paul, you know, we have a note in there too about our understanding, after talking to the engineering firm, is that the permit fee is not enough to cover
The review. Yeah, no, I understand.
Full round of inspections.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I, I did have a very long conversation with Chuck, and that will be coming forward.
Okay. So there's a couple of things we can do with the letter. We can keep something in here and rewrite it, or that last, second to last paragraph, or we can as a planning board, send a note to, to the landowners saying, as part of our process of looking at, you know, recommendation about the road acceptance, we took a closer look at the driveways. Here's a report. And here's the RSA saying that you're responsible for anything that happens, and I just feel like we have this information and we, it should be shared with the people who own the properties.
Yeah, I agree.
But we can either do that ourselves, which it sounds like you prefer, or we can ask the select board to do it.
Yeah, I, I mean, you've done the work. The planning board has done the work. I don't see why the planning board wouldn't, you know, issue that.
Okay.
How many houses are, they're on Tanya Lane?
Nine.
So they could be, we could send a letter to each of those houses, right?
Yeah. What you're suggesting is that this, that I would send these letters out, correct? So I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah, with the driveway inspection reports.
Once you decide, I will send the exact letter that you're talking about right now. Would you want them registered mail or regular mail? Be my question.
Registered. Registered.
Registered mail?
Please.
Yeah, I Okay. I'll reflect that in the budget and reflect that in the next consent.
I know, I was thinking not to be flippant in our budget.
They are ten dollars and forty-four cents apiece, just so you know.
Steph, are you recommending not to send it registered?
Oh, I mean, I think it's okay. I just
I know you have a
When I'm walking my dog, I could hand one out to each home and put it in there.
All right, to keep this moving, let's, we have three things. Let's start with two things, so.
It's a, it's a dollar, your postage line.
A dollar left or a dollar?
No, it's a total of a dollar.
Well, because I thought that was
I'm, I'm working after two thousand and twenty-five.
Right, I thought it was pooled, like legal fees.
Okay, don't send it registered. Don't.
Anyways.
I think you're right, though.
Send a
All right. Can somebody make a motion?
I'll personally deliver them.
Two things. The voting on the recommendation to, I guess we could just combine it. We can vote on a recommendation to the select board to be accompanied by this letter deleting the second to last paragraph. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move that we recommend to the select board acceptance of Tanya Lane with the modification to the letter that the chair just outlined.
Do you have any other comments? No, you've been very
I do not.
You good?
What are we taking out?
The paragraph about the homeowners, because we're going to contact
Okay. No other modifications on it?
What's that?
No other modifications on the letter.
Not unless anybody has
No.
Any?
It, it was noted on the board's disappointment on the developer's stance that's staying in.
I think maybe as a gesture of good faith, we can cut that.
Yeah.
I'll
I'm just asking what everybody's opinion is on.
I'd be inclined. I'd be inclined.
Do you mind me asking? What do you think? Stay in?
I think it represents how
The town feels.
Yes.
Okay.
From my listening to this for the last year, I think that that represents how the town feels.
And, and back to the point that was raised earlier, we want to be clear to anybody else who comes along. I mean, I want to go on record as saying this process did not go the way we would have liked.
Correct.
And in the future, we will.
That might lessen it a little bit if you said the board was disappointed in the developer's stance, but it's been, you know, it's just less.
Or like, could we word it what you just said, like, we're disappointed in how the process went, something? I don't know. Maybe we're getting too in the weeds on the wording here.
I'm not going to get in the weeds. I, I wouldn't even want to get into what town council advised. I mean, it's already out there in the public now, but to put in a formal letter, just is a little more than what I would want to see.
So what are you recommending?
Can we just say that we're releasing the bond?
We already did release the bond.
Okay.
Accompanied with this letter.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor with adopting a letter with the edits discussed. We're discussing the edits.
It's probably gratuitous, that sentence, in my opinion. I would, I would agree with just getting rid of the, the sentence. Just, I don't think it does anything.
Yeah, I think all the public
So, so, so I'll, I'll amend by motion. I move that we recommend to the select board acceptance of Tanya Lane with the understanding that the letter will be adjusted to remove the second to last paragraph and cut the final sentence in the fourth paragraph. The reason being is, while I, I understand that it does reflect how the town feels, I'm just not sure it's necessarily productive at this point. I, I'm just not sure it's helpful.
Yeah.
I, I think at this point, if I may, the whole point of the letter is really geared towards the residents of that road and what you want to say to them. So I would focus on that.
Any other, did we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, if you get rid of the second to last paragraph, though, you, you get rid of the property owner, she'll also be informed that if damage to the driveway occurs.
Yeah, we're going to do that separately.
Yeah.
And do we even
Oh, we're gonna, you're gonna craft another letter, Mr. Greenwood, and that's the one? Thank you. Because it's getting
Well, this is going to the select board to recommend to accept the road and giving our two cents along with it. And we're sending another one to the property owners.
We're dropping it to one cent.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to recommend to the select board that they accept Tanya Lane as a town road to be accompanied by a letter with a couple of edits that we've discussed. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
You're
Opposed.
Opposed?
Many letters.
What, what was your vote?
No.
What is, what is your vote?
No.
Okay, just, just a bit of a confusion.
Were there any abstentions? All right. So moved. Okay.
Thank you.
I know we well, we wanted, I was gonna maybe move Shannon out, but we also have
Let's get something at least more upbeat.
Okay. Simple one?
Shannon, could you please come forward, please? Thank you. No, I mean
Well, maybe not.
Thank you all for letting me be here today. Can you hear me okay?
Okay. Can you just reintroduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Yes, my name is Shannon Stevens, resident of Brentwood. So since the last time we've met, we've made some moves and some progress on building the ADU for my mom, at least the planning stages. We did decide that we're going to build, rather than, it is still going to be a detached ADU, but it's not going to be on the separate part of the land. It just won't work, and it's a lot more expensive. So we decided that we want to build above my current garage, and we want to add another bay so that we each have a place to park, and we also still have storage. The problem is that we're struggling to fit my mom's furniture and what she needs, just the space that she needs, into nine hundred and fifty square feet. I understand that there is an ordinance that's going to be going to the town in March, to the residents of the town, to allow up to fifty percent of our primary residence with a maximum space of thirteen hundred feet. Okay. But where that's not until March, and we have a builder in place, and we have a designer in place, and we reached out to engineers about the pocket plan for Deceptic, we really want to start moving now. But I'm not sure who to ask for permission or variance to go above the nine hundred and fifty square feet, because your, your ordinance won't pass, if it even passes, fingers crossed, in, until March. But the state is, has the cap at nine hundred and fifty square feet right now. So is there someone that I can ask? And if so, does anybody know to whom I should pose that question?
How big is your primary residence?
It's, I believe it's twenty-one forty-six.
Okay. So it would still be, half of that would be the limit under the draft order?
Correct. And that's really all we're looking for. I think we're looking for eleven fifty, so it's only a hundred square feet more than we currently can build, and that would fall within the fifty percent of my current home.
Thousand fifty.
Am I
If I'm doing math.
Yeah.
Your home is twenty-one hundred, it would be a thousand fifty.
Sorry, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. No, a thousand fifty. I don't know where I got that. Sorry. My bad. I was. Yeah, I just wanted to see who was paying attention.
That was my question.
Is this the zoning board?
Yeah, it's a Z B A issue.
So you can go to the zoning board of adjustment and ask for relief from state ordinances?
No, you'd be asking for relief from our ordinance. So whatever our limit is
On a, on an attached or?
A thousand seventy-three.
For, for both in, in this case.
For both, then?
Yes.
You'd, you'd ask for
Always ask for a detached ADU before.
Well, and it's by right, under current law, it's not
Your way of arguing it, it was lessened because of what our ordinance said, but now you're going to have the ability to say this is state law.
Okay.
So we have, you have to agree with it. And by the way, also, we're changing ours anyway. Z B A considered those two factors.
So you would list the RSA as something you're seeking relief from, because it only allows nine hundred and fifty square feet?
No, we're, we're, we are seeking relief from our ordinance.
Okay, the, the attached ordinance?
Both, both features of it.
Both features of it, the size requirement and, and the fact that it's attached. Okay.
Well, the detached is preempted, though. I mean, that's
Well, it, yeah, and, and that's exactly
Technically, they can't deny that part.
Deny it, even though our ordinance doesn't accept it.
Is your garage already attached?
It is, but we're looking to have an entrance on the outside of the garage, just to make it easier.
Yes, so it would be attached. That doesn't matter, right?
That was much simpler than I ever made it in my brain.
You, you did make it really difficult.
I did. I did.
So
Should we recommend
Since you're on the, since you're the Z B A
Yes, I'll be more than happy to
You can tell them what's in our draft
You want me to email you an application? And they're, they're available right online as well.
Okay.
And I can show you right up on the big screen here.
Perfect.
If you go to, to services, come down here to document If you go to services, come down here to document center. And then we're gonna scroll down to zoning board of adjustment. I'm gonna click on that and zoning regulations, application right there.
Okay.
And here's your application.
I think I did.
Okay.
Photographic memo.
And if you have any trouble filling this out or need some of the ordinances, just give my office a call or shoot me an email and I'll be more than happy to help you.
Because you know I will, so I appreciate that.
We.
Well, just get your numbers right. I think it's a thousand seventy-three to the highest.
Like we try to.
Now Glenn will write a, Glenn.
But I always write a memo to the ZBA.
Yeah. I'm having Glenn write memorandums to the ZBA.
When is the next ZBA meeting, Mark?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. When, when would I, when, when is the deadline to get this in for the next meeting?
The next meeting, it, they're the fourth Monday of the month.
Okay.
There's a bit of a shorter requirement, but I've got to get a butters notices out. I mean, if you hustled and got it to me the beginning of next week.
You can try.
Or midweek, I could get that all together and, and get that information out. And if you have any questions on a butters, because you have to send a butters notices within 200 feet. If you want help aggregating that list, I can help you with that as well. Yeah, and, and you can do that. Everybody at home's gonna learn how to do this right now. If you go to, I have it favorited. You go to the website again, we can go to GIS maps and then click on that and a map of Brentwood is gonna come up and do you mind showing your address?
No, no.
And your addresses?
For Sanborn Way.
For Sanborn. Right here. Right there. And once you bring up your property, he's thinking about it. There we go.
Okay.
You hit this right over here, a butters. It's 200 feet and these are all your butters listed out right here.
Okay.
By property. Now, keep in mind your butters list has to include you as well.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll think about whether I'll approve it.
Exactly.
Okay, excellent. Thank, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, final draft ordinance changes. So housing ordinances. We are at the point that we want to be able to start sharing these with the community in preparation for having hearings. We had talked about, well, we should have them on the website, but we'd also talked about maybe going to some community groups and presenting them. So we just need, so we're not voting, right now, we haven't had a public hearing, so we're not voting to adopt or recommend these. We just need to say tonight, is there anything else that you want to change before we start sharing them more widely?
Can you remind me what's blue and what's red mean?
So. I don't.
I think there were just two rounds of changes, maybe?
Yeah. I don't think there's a difference. So, but all of those things are changes to the existing, whether they're red or blue.
I believe the red is deleted and the blue is inserted.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Everything in red is gonna be deleted and the blue is what's.
Well, kind of, except it also says deleted on the blue at the top, so.
No, I don't think so.
You know, delete a comma, delete an S, so that's not.
Like where it says provide for the construction of.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Doug. I think that there are the changes between the first time.
Right.
Yeah.
Second time.
Yeah.
Cause we're not deleting accessory dwelling units may be constructed at the same time as the principal dwelling.
Correct.
That has to, that has to stay.
This is kind of a basic question, but the ADUs is for single-family residential units.
Correct.
So, so we have this, and I, I want to keep it, but retain the neighborhood character and single-family appearance of properties in Brentwood. Should that say in Brentwood's residential agricultural district? Cause we're not retaining the character in the commercial zone.
Unless it was a residence located in the commercial zone. Which there are plenty, there are quite a few.
Good point.
Then what about the ones that, I'm thinking of the person who just came, I think before the select board?
Wilson Property?
The Wilson Property, yeah. They have at least two and maybe three family house and an ADU.
Yeah.
So it can't be a single-family only house.
Yes, that, that happened over a course of.
Non-competition.
Years, yeah.
And permits were granted improperly, but they were granted. So our ordinance makes it clear that you can only have one ADU with one single-family structure.
Oh, it does make it.
And the owner has to occupy.
And, and the owner has to be in one of them.
One, one of the others, yeah.
You've come to. Come from a microphone, sir.
Brian West, 229 Middle Road.
You're an alternate, Brian.
The, if, if you have an owner who decides to have an ADU and all's well, but if the owner sells and the next buyer does not want to live there, the ADU is gone, right?
Meaning.
Well.
They can only rent out one of them if no one's living.
What?
If they're not living in one of them.
The regulation right now says if you have an ADU, the owner has to live on the property.
Mm-hmm.
So if he sells it and the new owner does not wish to live there, then what happens to the ADU? Do they, it's just not used anymore, is that correct?
An enforcement issue.
I mean, if, if that is the desire of the owner and they, hopefully a real estate agent would tell them that they're breaking the law, but if they don't, the town would have to go in and say, that is not a rentable unit.
Okay, but is that, is it clear in the writing?
In this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, it doesn't go into your scenario about a former, I mean, a future owner, but it's very clear that the owner has to be on premises and can live in either one of the units.
Oh, I don't dispute that.
That's not missing, though, right? That's like an, an existing regulation.
Correct, correct, because that, that was in the previous state law as well.
And, and, and that language is pretty unambiguous because it, it doesn't say a renter can occupy, it says the owner.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, it's right, it's, it's right there.
Are we, are we dead set on that? Like?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't want to allow?
No.
No.
You'll have investors coming in.
No, yeah, do you?
No.
Just throwing it out there.
It actually says, wait, I, I didn't realize this.
We are really committed to that.
The red and the blue, but not the black.
More rental opportunities.
Well, but that's why we've got, we're doing the multifamily.
Enforcement thing.
Says, Brian, the owner.
A lot of the progressive guys in Vermont are.
Brian, it says the owner of the property shall occupy.
They should go live in Vermont.
Stay in Vermont.
All right.
I know, we're not.
Shall occupy one of the units as a primary dweller and be the landlord of the secondary.
We're not letting you go next year. All right, any, any edits to the first two pages? Okay. I just have a couple things on the, on the.
The handout?
The handout. There's a lot of bold in that first paragraph to the point that it just all looks bold.
Wait, you went too fast for me. I have a question about that, a minimum of one additional parking space. Is there, is there a maximum?
No.
No.
State law has been changed to say that all you can require is one parking space. They can put as many parking spaces as they want.
Well, that would be attractive.
Require one.
Okay. So on the fact sheets, the only thing I thought, and I, I know, we've had this discussion and I know we don't want to address it, but.
Then why are we talking about it?
So the second to last bullet says create income support opportunities for homeowners in expensive housing markets. I want to say by providing long-term rental options because if people, I'm not gonna look at Mark. If people put in an ADU for the purpose of short-term rent, that doesn't solve our housing, that doesn't address the housing issue.
But it does address income support opportunities.
Yeah, but that's not the point of the.
Maybe it is.
I think you're gonna find that very, very rarely happens.
Yeah.
And that's the whole point, that's the whole exact point of having one of the unit's owner occupied. There's accountability there. It, it, if your tenant is loud, noisy and obnoxious, you're not gonna rent it to them again.
Yeah.
Right? Can you just say create opportunities for homeowners in expensive housing markets? What? Income support opportunities? That just sounds like.
Weird.
Yeah.
Weird, gobbledygook planner language that a regular person is going to say, I don't even know what that's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
I hope Crystal doesn't watch this.
Create opportunities.
I, I love Crystal, but that's gotta go.
That's bad. That's better.
That's those two long, two words, right?
That's just, it just is silly sounding.
Okay, next page. So this is describing the changes to the map, to the districts themselves. The only thing I had on this was one, two, three, the fourth bullet. The former multifamily professional office district located north of North Road will become part of the residential agricultural district. And should that say new multifamily structure will be?
Ah, yep, it should.
We're gonna be tearing down, uh.
Happy way, yeah. We're not gonna do that.
Any other items on this?
That was a good catch.
That was really, yeah.
I had to go sit and read quietly.
Who helped you with that?
What'd he say? I missed that.
You don't need to know, but you should slap it in the head with.
Yeah, that was the power of the furry fruit in the kitchen.
I'm sorry.
For my day job, I do work in policy, so I read stuff. Okay. Anything else on that page? All right, next page. I don't think I had anything in this other than we'll have to update our, probably our site plan review, but not until the ordinances change. Any changes? All right. Next page.
Oh, wait, you're going fast again.
Sorry.
Didn't we have six plus two or something? In the.
Yeah, that's.
Three.
Yeah, that's the page we're on, yeah.
Yeah, so does it say there's the two in there? It just says in no case will densely be greater than six units for one acre of land. Oh, unless we're.
Yep. Should that say developable land? What, per one acre of developable land? The next paragraph says developable area is.
Yeah, that, that probably makes sense. One acre of developable land.
Are you catching all these, Mr. Greenwood?
Okay.
And then at the bottom of the page, I just wanted to verify that we're, that we're good with the no building in our structure should be located near than 50 feet of the state right of way. Is that okay with the state plans? Okay. Anything else on that page? Yeah?
Okay, you turned it off back.
Yeah, there you go.
Under B, dwelling density. It says six units per developable acre. And if you do workforce housing, you can go up to eight. But it doesn't give you any formula. And if you do the math the way this is written, you'd have to give 35% of your units to affordable and no developer could do it. You can't be given 35% affordable. I gave you an example when I was here that the normal is 20%. Because once you get over nine acres, you gotta do a big development to afford a $700,000 treatment plant that could go to $800,000. But the way this word, worded, it doesn't back into a formula. Are you saying if someone does workforce housing, they gotta give you two units? And it doesn't give you a formula how you get there based upon whatever gets approved. And the normal formula is 20%.
We also need him to identify himself, I'm sorry. For the, for the people that are listening at home, you need to identify yourself.
Could you please, please state your name for me?
Joseph Falzoni.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Stratton, New Hampshire. So I, I don't understand how you get to how many affordable units without a formula, a bo, a bonus formula. Cause normally you get a bonus percentage of what your market rate unit says. But you, you still have it capped at eight. You can't get more than eight in any case.
Well, it's eight per acre.
Eight per acre.
So it's six nor, like, without, and then eight with.
You can get eight with if two of them are workforce.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you, if you carry that out and you say you go to 10 acres, then you're saying you can, we're saying you can get 60 units that are non-workforce. And we're saying that 20, you'll do 20 that are workforce.
Yeah, but that's 35% of your development. You could never do it.
You don't have to go that high, though. We're saying that, that, that would be the limit.
That's the maximum.
So you could just, right?
No, that's not what you're, it's not what you're saying.
So you get 60 units, just as an example you did. What's the formula of affordable? Because you want someone to do affordable if, and you want them to get a bonus. How do you do the math?
Two, two for every six.
Eight, eight units, two of which are, are affordable housing.
Right.
Okay, so what's that? That's 25%.
So we don't care if you then develop to your heart's content more acres, but those more acres are just gonna give you the six units per acre.
But he's also saying once you get past what, 18 or something?
You can't economically make it work by continuing to add workforce, then wherever you want to stop doing workforce, you use a six acre, I mean, you use a six unit per acre count.
Okay. I just don't see that in there clear. I mean, I don't, I don't understand it clear. That's why I wanted to ask it.
Because if you're.
20%?
Twenty. Twenty is what is normal. Cause then you have a formula, your bonus formula is X. And you know what you can do. But you still have in here, you don't want more than eight total units, whatever you call them, per acre on the site.
Correct. You're, the, the most you can get is eight, two of which are workforce.
Right.
And if you're saying that there is a threshold for you to do workforce, then whatever that threshold is for your project.
You can use it.
You can, you can.
That's fine. I just.
You can use the acreage count, as long as you have enough acres.
Right, as long as you have enough acres.
And then if you want to go.
Developable acres.
Right, and then if you want to go beyond that, you're, you only can do six acres, I mean, six units per acre.
All right.
But, but you were saying also that once you get past what, 18 or something, you need the big septic, so it's.
No, it's a community wealth.
No, it's the community. Oh, the well. Okay, the well, it's not the septic.
Yeah, cause you're not gonna get very many people to come in here, especially you know what you have for land. It's gonna be a sizable development or you can't do the, the community system.
Right, so I, I don't, I don't care. And I don't care if we have to reword this to state that, I don't care how, how many units of workforce the developer wants to make. I want you to make as many as make your project work.
Right, and that's, that's all I'm saying.
And, and then.
The ADU, Mark.
And, and then you just can't, once you've, once you've got that number that you want, any additional acres you're developing, fall back to the six.
Right, fall back to the six. Yeah, I just think you gotta clear that up so it's understood.
All right.
You're gonna have people coming in here saying.
I, I will, I will work on clearing that up.
Would it help to have a table with some examples?
Maybe, or, or some sort of, some sort of equation. But yeah, I mean, it, it clearly, you're looking at this and having a question and you look at these all the time. Maybe, or, or some sort of, some sort of equation, but yeah, I mean, it, it clearly, you're looking at this and having a question, and you look at these all the time.
Right.
Do you know of a.
We want to do it.
Community that has an ordinance?
Yeah, we, I, I did them in Rye, New Hampshire.
Rye, maybe we could look at.
Well, it's twenty percent. You know, you, there, there's Exeter, as far as I know, is twenty percent too.
Okay.
But, you know, then you have a formula to do them, but you still can cap it, and like, someone could come in and say, I only wanna do five, whatever it is. And, and they do it. I just think you wanna make that clearer. Appreciate you.
I appreciate that, yeah.
My, my other question, which you, uh, brought up earlier, is, and I think I, I know the answer, is, in one breath, it says, you can be fifty feet from the edge of pavement on Route one twenty-five. And then it says you have to be a hundred feet from the edge of right of way, well, that's a big difference. And I don't know if it's, if, if that is a state regulation.
It's one that we've had on our books forever, because we understand that there is a flexible right of way on one twenty-five. And so, you're, you're going to have to maintain the stricter of the two.
So it's gonna be the right of way?
It most likely is gonna be the right of way.
And, and so from the edge of right of way, it's gonna be a hundred feet?
A hundred feet.
Yeah, cause in that case, it would be a hundred and fifty feet. And is that, within that right of way, within that hundred and fifty feet, you can't build anything?
Correct.
A parking lot?
Is that?
Oh wait, you can do parking.
Yeah, you can do parking.
You can do parking.
It's a building setback.
So, so that's just developed over time, is that why it's so funky? Like.
No.
It, it's been a hundred and twenty-five the whole time that I've been here.
Okay. So where did the fifty come?
We've, we've had the fifty for, so that you could do a parking area that is not a building.
Okay. But we're changing no building or structure could be, shall be located nearer than.
I'm not really sure why we're saying that. It must, it, it exists, but it, it does make you think you can do something, but you're restricted by the, the larger setback from the right of way.
But you can use that for your density, if it's upland, after you take out your wetlands, A and B, and steep slopes. So you just gotta hope you have enough upland behind that setback.
To make the, to make a project work.
That's an interesting question, Mr. Greenwood, that our existing commercial ordinance now is a hundred and twenty-five feet. What if someone wanted to do use, are we saying to apply to the hundred and twenty-five or the hundred?
I think we're saying, if it's in association with housing, you can get closer.
Okay. It's a little bonus, I guess.
Right, fair. That's what I thought.
I only have one other, one other question. On page six, it makes a suggestion. It says multifamily dwelling, a building containing more than two, but not more than six dwelling units. But you allow, you allow, you allow in that zone up to twenty-four units in a garden apartment at two stories. And if you give it affordable units, you can go three stories. So does this conflict with it?
Well, I think, I think the suggestion is to get rid of.
Right, the worst, this proposal is going to get rid of that multifamily dwelling definition.
Oh, we, oh.
And do the one that's under six, um, suggestion.
Okay, which, okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, so we cross that one out.
The one that's not, the one that's not highlighted.
The one that coincidentally Joe just had an issue with.
Yeah, so, so the one in, the one in black is, oh.
It would be, that's, that would go away, yes.
That's all I had.
I like it when we agree.
Yeah. No, it's just that, you know, if you don't get it clear this time, you're gonna have tons of people coming in here.
Of course.
How do I do that?
What the heck?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your.
Absolutely true.
We truly appreciate you taking your time and coming in here and having this conversation.
I'm just gonna stay and listen to the rest that you have to say.
Okay.
Glenn, could you just give me a little more clarity on the multifamily commercial, in the commercial lot? Uh, one twenty-five, you said our setback is, and you said it could be closer, but you did not give, didn't we agree at a hundred?
What we're saying is that with this proposal, it's a hundred.
Okay, that's what I understood.
Right, as opposed to one twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a dumb question, maybe it's not dumb. Something about adaptive use or something?
What page?
What page do you want? Well, I lost the page, sorry. Ah, page two. Commercial district. Where it says, we're adding the multifamily residential, and then it says mixed use and adaptive reuse. What is adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse is changing the use of an existing structure to something else.
Like converting an abandoned school into housing?
Or mills, mills are really big examples of adaptive reuse. You change a mill and you make it into residential structure.
I see. Is that defined, or is that just something that is sort of common, common knowledge?
It's like an industry term.
There are so many things that could be adapted, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And they wanted to give relief to that, meaning, this structure exists, it's not being used, if we wanna reuse this structure, we have to.
Instead of tearing it down.
Yeah, instead of tearing it down, we wanna reuse this old structure, so we need to give certain leeway to that particular proposal, and that was they, and it's, you should read it. Adaptive uses.
Term of art.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything on page three? The one that says three at the bottom, that we're just talking about with the setbacks.
Oh, okay.
Um, if not, page four. The question I have on this, and we, we talked about this with Brazilians, and it made total sense at the time. We might have talked to the developers about it too, but the idea of, it says, um, consider rear massing versus front presentation, but we have residential behind the commercial district. So if you push, like, let's say somebody's gonna build some townhouses, and they push it to the back of the lot, it's actually gonna be closer to the people who live there. So.
We, we have required buffering, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is if, instead of saying that, we should just say something about buffering, visual buffers from all angles. Under all multifamily structures, it says, and consider rear massing versus front presentation when establishing a relationship with the road frontage. I'm just thinking there's, there's residential roads on the backside of the commercial district, so if you, if you put things to the back of the lot. Yeah, but it's kinda, it's guidance, we don't have to change it, but, I don't know.
There is something we have to change here, though. Up in the, up in paragraph, um, three hundred, zero, zero, two, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, five. Um, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, as well as those mandated by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Water Supply and Pollution Control Division. Water Supply and Pollution Control Division hasn't existed for years. So, we're, we're going to eliminate that. I have no doubt that it's still in our ordinance right now, and we will, um, we'll deal with that, but we're, we're not gonna.
So just New Hampshire D E S?
Yes, New Hampshire D E S.
We won't be carrying that on into the new one.
No, we're not.
We're going back to the multifamily structures.
As I said, it's, it's just a recommendation, so, I wouldn't, you know, our consideration, I don't know if we have to wordsmith every, everything. It's not saying we muster, we should, it's just a consider.
Okay. All right, anything else on that page? Do we need to define townhouse and garden style apartment?
Are we on page five now?
It's not, well, they start using it on this page, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And, but it does, it does connect to a question I have on the next page, which is why, you know, we've got all these guidelines for the townhouse structures about roofline and modulating the facade, and then we get to garden style apartments, and there's just one thing. And it seems like those should be parallel, but maybe I don't totally understand the difference between a townhouse and a garden style apartment.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Falzone knows the difference, do you know the difference, Mr. Falzone, between, between the townhouse structure and a garden style apartment?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to have to ask you.
Yeah, just for the people at home.
Garden style are what you normally see as a square apartment building. And they're stacked on levels, where townhouses are like an individual two-story house, but they're separated by a certain type of wall for fireproofing, and you can get your density up. Usually the center ones aren't worth as much as the end ones, but you're getting light on three sides.
Yeah.
And under garden style apartments, are we comfortable saying three stories of workforce? Can we go three stories in Brentwood?
Well, you'd have to change your height requirement of thirty-five feet.
Do we have fire apparatus that?
We do not have, we don't have a ladder trucks.
Oh, so I'm thinking we need to delete the, the third story.
Cross that out.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Good point.
Almost brought it up. No, but everybody talked about it and seemed good with it.
No, I'm not good with something we can't protect.
I kinda knew, we didn't have a ladder truck, and we're gonna go over thirty-five feet, but everybody seemed to be comfortable with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we are.
Okay.
Do you want me to look for definitions of garden and townhouse?
If it's, if it's like adaptive reuse, and it's well-known, and nobody sees a reason for it, that's fine.
Is there any other way to, like, provide some sort of incentive for more workforce housing if we can't give them a third story?
Well, it's still the number of.
Just still an increased number of units.
All right. On page five, under Town Center District, it says accessory apartments?
We should stay with accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
Right, that's what we all, that's the phrase we use. Number six. It probably says that presently.
It looks like it does say that presently. Page six.
Where's the, I never understand where the town center is, because we don't do it, so.
We're in the town center.
I know, but.
It, it, there's a map that shows where it is.
Yeah, I know.
It's on page seven, so.
We're never.
You, you, use the map list.
I know, but it's so.
It's in the center.
Thank you.
All right, what are we up to now?
Page six, definitions.
Well, we already said that.
So they're suggesting deleting dwelling unit, dwelling or residence and living unit, and just having a definition of dwelling unit. Is there, are we losing anything by doing that? What was the reason for having all those different definitions?
It's embarrassing to say that all three of those say, they all say the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of what I, yeah.
They, they just all say the same, we do mention, we do manage to mention mobile home or trailer as being something that had to be called out, but there's no reason for it to be called out.
Okay.
Call it manufactured housing.
Okay, so you can delete.
We, we literally can do just what is being suggested here.
I feel like when we, when we do show these to folks, we probably need a version that has the track changes, so they can see the original. But I think it helps too, to just have a clean version.
I think so too.
I mean, I, I see why we need both, cause people need to know what's changing, but it's hard to read. Everybody good with the map?
Yep.
Why are you laughing? Okay.
I'm particularly good with that sort of teal colored part.
All right.
You mean the one in the center?
Kidding, we're going long here, okay. Commercial district fact sheets. I am not.
Fin, fins up, Glenn, fins up.
I'm not a big fan of the mixed use development example, because it looks about resized as bigger than what it's next to.
First of all, it's three stories. It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. We really, yeah, you're right, that, that, that image, and that can be changed.
Yeah, okay. I thought they showed some other ones that were better than that, but, um. And then, in the bullet points, I think, where it says creating a new industrial district, it should say something like creating a dedicated industrial district in the area where that, it's currently industrial, or something like that. It's not like we're creating a new.
Right, we are.
Yeah.
This makes it sound like we are.
Right. Would, would it make sense to just like call out Pine Road specifically in the bullet point?
Yeah.
Cause that's mostly what we're referring to, I, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Bullet should just say, just what you said, making the industrial zone on Pine Road just industrial.
Exclusively industrial.
Preserving our current industrial district.
Expanding Pine Road as an industrial district.
Except it's got no industrial.
What, Glenn, reword it?
Because we're, we're, we're not expanding it as an industrial district.
Creating a clearly defined.
Everything allowed in the present zoning ordinance, industrial works, what we're not allowing anymore are those things that are sort of commercially based, because we don't want commercial activity there, we want industrial activity there. So what, so this bullet should say, making the industrial zone on Pine Road specifically industrial.
There is some commercial activity there now, but.
That we have to allow to exist.
But can't you just say creating a clearly defined industrial district?
Yeah, we could.
Well, I would say clearly defining an industrial district.
The industrial district on Pine Road.
Yes, there you go.
But is that our only industrial district, even though it has?
It is.
It is.
Commercial and houses.
It has very little commercial, though.
Well, and the houses are not in the, you'll see there's a little gap there, where the.
Yeah, the houses aren't in the zone.
Before Middle Road.
Yes.
And then the, similar to the next one, instead of changing the former to multifamily professional to residential state, incorporate the former multifamily professional zoning district into the residential agricultural district.
Now, I didn't get that, cause I was doing, doing the wording for the one above it.
All right.
And I missed it.
So have it, the next bullet say incorporating the former multifamily professional zoning district into the residential agricultural district.
When you, when you say it that way, it sounds like we're still allowing multifamily professional zoning in that zone. And we're not.
I kinda like it the way it is, maybe it's me.
I'm outvoted.
Anybody else? I think it's clear and tells you exactly what's gonna happen.
Okay, ignore. The next two are, it's kinda confusing, because it says, we're allowing six units based on septic loading, but we'll let you go up to eight if there's workforce.
Yeah, why don't we just say, oh, within, within the, from, oh, it's, this is just commercial district. So, allowing multifamily units at six units per acre, and why are we breaking that out? Why don't we have it?
Yeah, just combine it.
Just say, and up to. Just say, and up to eight units per acre if workforce housing is.
Yeah, and just take the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually do want.
All right, anything else on this one?
It, it includes trees, yes, but it can, there can also be hard landscaping that qualifies as soft design. It's all, it's, it, it's all, it's all, yeah, it's all, that's very lingo oriented again. Introduce, so introducing just buffering, increased buffering and design requirements for multifamily structures.
What if, what if we said something about the, because we have all this information in here about making things look less bulky and more varied, just a phrase that says, and design elements to reduce the appearance of.
Instead of design elements.
Big apartment buildings.
Introduce, introduce buffering and design elements.
Meant to lessen the impact of the development visually?
Sure.
That sounds weird.
Or something about, yeah. I don't know. Okay, I think we're, are we running out of steam?
Yes.
Okay. Workforce housing, I'm gonna jump to the fact sheet, do you guys have any issues with that? I didn't love the diagram.
Where are we going? The very last page? Sorry, what was your concern?
The diagram, I don't know, it looks.
Oh, on the bottom right?
Yeah. I get what they're saying, but it makes it look like we're gonna allow eight houses on an acre in the single-family residential district, or something, I don't know, doesn't.
You're right, that's what that picture says. It, it goes from Brentwood with McMansions to Brentwood with tenement houses. And that isn't the image we're trying to convey.
That is not, that's not, yeah, so I don't.
That is not, that is not what we're trying to convey.
It's two houses and six ADUs.
Yeah, right.
Which is against the law.
Okay.
Do, I mean. Do, do we really need, like, a picture?
I really don't.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
It looks like Monopoly.
We don't want a picture that looks like that.
Not that looks like that, right.
Because people are going to say, no, I wanna keep this one right here.
Right, yeah.
No, that's not, that's not.
It's not, that's not helping our case.
I'm glad you guys enjoy our meeting so much. Changes to the workforce housing ordinance.
How often do they update these numbers? All right, the, the very last line on page two, workforce housing shall be permitted in the following zoning districts as follows. Can't we not use follow twice? Can't we just say workforce housing shall be permitted in the following zoning districts? So the criteria, how often do they update that? Once a year? The four thirty-one?
Yes.
Once a year? So we can feel comfortable putting it in there, it's gonna, that'll be the current one at the time we vote?
Well, that's, that's kind of a preamble, so I don't, that won't actually go into the ordinance.
It might be noted at the beginning of the.
Yeah.
Right, the language that goes in there just describes.
First eight?
Right, right. Yeah, that, that, that first, those first two paragraphs aren't part of the ordinance.
Right. It says multifamily is five or more units, but don't we have three or more in the?
Well, state law says workforce housing is five or more. So when we're just talking about workforce here, you have to use that definition.
But don't, but do we have a definition of multifamily somewhere else that's gonna conflict? Should this be workforce multifamily?
We should just, maybe in that other definition, we could say, we could have parenthetically at the end, not workforce housing.
What page you on right now?
Wait a second, didn't we, didn't we just say six and two workforce, now we're saying workforce has to be five?
No, 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 no. That's, that's just density, don't confuse things, Liz.
Okay, I am totally confused.
That's just getting at density, and this is just a definition for what the structure of a workforce housing unit looks like.
Could, could I just back up just for one quick sec? Just going back to Brett's point quickly about the four hundred thirty-one thousand, like, I'm not concerned about those two paragraphs because they're not part of the ordinance, but we do have the four thirty-one figure on the fact sheet, and so to Brett's point, I, we do maybe just wanna verify that that's still up to date before we, you know, distribute this far and wide, I mean, I, I don't know.
I'm gonna guarantee that Resilience has done that, but I'm happy, I'm happy to look at that as well.
It usually gets posted in January or very beginning of February.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure that they would have checked that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't have two conflicting definitions.
Let me know when you move on to page three.
I'm good with page two, anybody have any other edits, page two?
I just had a question, I'm assuming utilities is heat and hot water, right? It's not electric or anything like that, right?
That's a utility.
Utility is.
Oh, okay, because in mass, it's just heat and hot water, okay.
Um, page three.
It says, workforce housing, single-family units or owner-occupied duplex units with one of the units designed as workforce housing shall be allowed on lots with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage?
Yeah, I'm confused by this.
Shouldn't that be two hundred?
Thing.
That's our residential lot standard, that's up to you.
But that's on the main road, two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if you meant internal roads.
Well, on any class five road or better. Class five road, yes, class five road.
So you're saying like if it was a private road?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, in here, you have a distinction of needing two hundred feet of frontage on an existing road rate, which in this case would be Route one twenty-five. You didn't have a distinction that the housing setback on the internal roads, which you have to build to town standards, but they don't have to be town roads. You can do condominium, single-family, because you allow condominium, single-family. You couldn't possibly get enough road that you give two hundred to every condominium that gets built in there.
Yeah, we're talking about workforce, though. Workforce housing within the residential agricultural district.
Well, that's a different district.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
And that's why I'm bringing that up, is that our current lot.
I think it needs to meet our two hundred feet, and I'm not, this is creating back lots.
And it's also.
Which isn't a standard that we have for it at all.
I agree with you.
Well, and it's not, I mean, what if you have a cluster development? You have to have the frontage, but not.
Where'd that whole back lots thing come from?
We, we did talk about it with them, because it is a common thing to do in some other towns, but I don't remember us saying that we were buying into it.
No, it was a topic of discussion.
I mean, the, the point of this whole thing is the twenty percent bonus, right?
Correct.
But if you need normally two acres and two hundred feet of frontage, then how do you add, how do you get a twenty percent bonus?
So if you go into one oh seven, coming out of South Road and you go left, is that the back lot type of lots that they're talking about, you go down the road a little bit? You, you've got a house in front and you have a house in the back, and I think it's one driveway that goes, connects both? Is this what they're referring to?
Um, where, where are you?
Come, come down South Road, go into it's Fremont, okay? And come to the end, go left, you know, going down towards Kingston, and they built probably eight or ten houses down that way on the left-hand side?
Me.
Yeah, him.
Oh, that was Joe.
Six, six lots.
Yeah, so is that what you, is that a, a back lot that you're talking about?
No, no.
Like side by side.
Cluster, front lot subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was a clustered subdivision that actually contained boundary lines within it.
Right.
Yes, there's many different ways of doing a cluster.
Back lots are, a lot of times they're called flag lots. So what you have is you have a lot that looks like a standard-sized lot with large frontage, and then you have one that on the road is very short frontage, and it fans out to a bigger lot behind the one that's on the front with the larger one. So, con, if you think of them as flag lots, that's what they really look like. And we don't have those.
So, well, one was just built, I think, on, on South Road.
Yes, one point two seven.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
It was like an older farmhouse, and there's a very expensive house behind it.
They got a variance for it. And, and worse of all, Glenn, worse of all.
How did they work out that driveway?
They gave them a right-of-way through the property. They have no frontage whatsoever.
None.
Zero frontage.
And, and my understanding from a while ago is that, the decisions were made historically and people understood when they developed their land or subdivided, that the town would not do that. So we don't, yeah, okay, so we want the ten, we want the bonus. I don't know how you solve the frontage.
Are they trying to wrap this into like a cluster? Or it's a standalone, it's a standalone ordinance?
Yeah. I'm, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
I'm, I'm concerned with the second half of section one.
Glenn, why couldn't, why couldn't you, just to give you an example, on like Mill Road, which is a condominium, single-family, it's governed by separation of buildings, how many feet you require for the right apartment. If you were doing a development like that, that was conventional with workforce housing, and it was a condominium, why couldn't you build it the same way? You could never give, give one two hundred feet of frontage. The road would kill you.
Right.
Well, because clearly I wanna kill you, Joe.
Do it after I sell them.
Glenn, can you reach out to Mark and see if he can rework this?
Can I reach out to Steve?
Well, but Mark's the workforce guru.
I'll try to, I'll try to.
All right, reach out to Steve.
I'll try, I'll try to.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a direct contact from Mark, though.
Okay.
Oh, I do have his, I have his email.
He has his email.
Of course, I do have email.
Yeah, I mean, Steve's fine too, but I think, I think this was Mark's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you're right.
But nobody's happy with this one, basically.
No.
Okay.
Yet.
Yet. This is, this is confusing to me too, because we're saying, we have the six and the eight.
Where, where are you, woman?
Commercial districts.
Oh.
Yeah, and then it's ten percent of the.
But then it's the ten percent and the five percent, which those two things don't really work together.
And twenty percent, oh, they don't, you're right.
When did all these percentages come?
Yeah, that, this is, this is just cut and paste from someplace. This is, it's, it's more discussion with Mark.
All right, so this one needs more work, anything else on this?
It's good you looked at this, Chris.
Yeah. I mean, that's why they sent it to us.
That was the idea.
That was the idea.
All right.
God bless them.
Yes.
So, if, if, if we're done going through the ordinance, I just had a more general question, so, and I know I bring this up every meeting, and so I apologize, but can we start the process of maybe circulating like a calendar for, that we can sign up for office hours?
Yeah, I think we have enough that we can start sharing things.
Yeah, yeah.
And say, you know, the workforce housing one is a work in progress, the other ones will be cleaned up pretty quickly.
But maybe we could like circulate some kind of calendar, and we can kind of indicate what our availability would be for office hours. And we would of course notice it, so people would know to come in if they wanna chat with us.
So are you thinking during the day, or evening, or both, or?
Could be both, I, I mean, because I can do during the day every other Monday, because with my job, I get every other Monday, either half-day or off, but, but we could also do evenings too, because a lot of, you, you know, a lot of us here have work, and also members of the community have work too, so coming in during the day may not be feasible for them, so I think both.
I, I think it's gonna be really important when you put this out, because it's gonna be by vote, not out of town.
Yeah.
That it'd be clearly be, be, be made to them that even if they don't pass this, me or some other developer can come in with something that doesn't even mirror this.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be hard to get through, because anytime people hear density, they get dizzy.
Are you talking about the workforce or the multifamily in the commercial?
Multifamily, just a way this is structured, if they don't understand that.
It's state law.
They will use it?
It's state law, is that, is that what you're saying?
That's the education.
Yeah, and, and, and I, the goal is to kind of, is for, the reason we're doing this is to create something that works for Brentwood, rather than just having to fall back on the state law that doesn't necessarily take into account the needs of our community, so.
There, there is some skepticism, I will say, because we, we had an open house and we talked about this, and we did a survey, and there's skepticism that we would be challenged, but I.
Until it happens, then all of a sudden, we won't be skeptical anymore.
Right. I'm not saying I'm skeptical, I'm saying we heard that in the, in the community.
Weekends, I've done a lot of rezoning, weekends are a good time, because people aren't under as much pressure at the end of the day, and their work and their jobs, even if you do one on a weekend, have coffee and donuts or something that helps them relax.
Well, I think Bruce wanted to do that one.
Yeah.
And I'm volunteering.
All day on a Saturday.
I'll second that.
Well, he's not here.
Oh, I've, I've pushed it closer to the mic, so.
I was gonna say, yeah, he's like screaming at the computer, like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Could we come up with, say, four to six community groups that we could speak at? One, one thing is, I think, we'll, we need to go to the select board, but maybe we do that after we've finished everything. Groups that you belong to, or?
Definitely, yeah.
That you think have a lot of people in them that would be interested in this.
Should we do something at the library one time, and one at the rec center when they have the senior, senior citizens day or something like that?
I think we should pass as wide a net as we can.
Senior luncheon.
Senior luncheon.
That's a good one.
And actually, it's really good.
Is this too political to ask them if at their craft fair that we could put up?
Is this too political to ask them if at their craft fair that we could put up some, just easels that just?
I wouldn't do it there. I wouldn't do it that time.
The craft fair?
The craft fair, yeah. I think it's mixing things, that's probably not a good idea.
But a senior luncheon?
There's, there's, yeah, the senior luncheons are only every other month. But there's, there's a bunch of other things being talked about, so it might be other, other opportunities.
Library. I mean, if we do library, rec center, that's, that's like having our own event. I'm thinking too about like going to someone else's meeting, like, I don't even know if we have a Rotary or anything like that.
The, um, is, is, I'm assuming like Swayze, there's some kind of like PTA type of organization?
They don't call that anymore.
Right.
They call it something funky that's always up on the-
Parent teachers.
Parents Teachers Association? They don't call it that anymore?
Oh, it's a PTO, it's an organization, not the association. Parent faculty group or something. If, if, it's, the PTA is an official, you know, national. You can't use PTA unless you actually have a PTA.
But, but I think that would be a good opportunity, because a, a lot of those folks, because they have kids and families, they may not have the capacity to come to public hearings and things like that. So.
Okay.
We've got more on the agenda.
I know, so homework, everybody think about one or two groups that you could go to and give a presentation, could be informal, but so that we're reaching out to more folks in the town. And select board? Should we present to the select board in December? Are you every other week?
No, we're every week, yeah. Probably after we're done with budgets. It's going to be sometime in December.
All right, you want to get us a date for when you're done with the budgets? Okay.
Or you could ask Julie. I don't have my schedule with me.
All right, so I'll, maybe I'll send out like a Google sheet with office hours, groups, and people can volunteer.
What if we reach out to Three Ponds? Don't they have, uh, meetings once a month or something like that?
Yeah, like homeowners association.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a connection with the, um, with somebody on that, there's a group of four of us that are doing senior programming for the rec ideas, and we have, one of our members is, um, from Three Ponds and she's also an alternate to the rec. So we're slowly, it's hard to, um, kind of infiltrate that group, because they just have their own stuff.
Can you ask her?
Yeah, 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 we'll, we're working on it.
I, I think.
My only concern is that we, we are all saying the same thing, like if we're going to different places, different people are going to different places. I would like a cheat sheet or something that
Yeah.
that puts us all on the same page, because that could really be ugly.
Yeah, we'll have, um, the fact sheets.
Yep.
And then I can write points summarizing each thing, and then I think we should do pairs.
Yeah, I was going to say team up.
Pairs, that's a good deal for that.
I guess depending on the setting, is it worth with PowerPoint?
I think it depends on.
You're going to have to be on my team for that.
Doug and I would not be a team to do that.
Oh, you can run the PowerPoint now, okay.
All right, we have a few more.
The PowerPoint's not a cordless drill either, so.
That's my second career.
Sign ordinance change. Is that in here or we've had it so many times?
A few pages in.
There we go.
We've talked about these in the past, and these were the changes that you wanted Glenn to make. He's made those changes, and I want to put it before you, I'm trying to lock you down on a public hearing date.
Do we have anything at the next meeting?
Not yet. A public hearing for sign ordinance changes.
Do we have?
Good idea.
Do we have time?
Oh, I was just, I was just saying, I don't think we do.
All right, December 4th it is.
Because those are
These are zoning, so you have to have 10-day clear notification.
December 4th.
Do they have to go on the ballot as well? No, we-
Yeah, these will go on the ballot.
These are all to go on the ballot, that's right.
The public hearing would be to- The motion, if, if these don't change a public hearing, the motion would be to bring them forward.
But that's not the next meeting, it's the meeting after, so you should have enough time, right?
Yeah, if, if we do it on the 4th, we have plenty of time. Yeah.
And alls I have to do is a public hearing notice.
Yeah.
Like with a standard public hearing.
Yep.
We can adopt them that evening.
We can propose that they go to town meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Recommend.
Yes, so do you want to lock that day down for?
December 4th.
December 4th?
Yep.
All right. Consent agenda.
Do we have that now?
Yes, and I would like to thank Mark for-
Pass it around in all your glo, in all its glory.
Organizing, our financial tracking.
Super, thanks.
Answer questions.
I know you've been working hard on it.
So, but these are all tied to projects, correct?
Only, uh, one of them is tied to your budget.
The engineering, and why is that?
That was the one where you called, I believe you called in Chris Raymond to appear before you.
Okay.
And I can't really attribute that to an applicant, because you requested him to be here.
Right. Okay. Is that?
So what you'll find in there is the checks, I did, I handwrote them and I kind of messed up on one, so I voided it. You'll see that in the manifest that you're going to sign. Uh, the invoice that it's associated with is attached to the check, and they're just hand copied to each other.
Okay, and now you're tracking all this in in the future and going back by project.
Yes, I'm, I'm doing this all retroactively. So-
Did they sign something?
Yes, that, there's a piece on top, yeah.
It's the way we used to do it, and then I guess it was going through the town administrator's office for a while, and we are taking it back.
Which we should do.
When an applicant, uh, this is the latest one that I did, so I, I'll give you a bit of an example. It was a ZBA application.
That's all right.
This one right here, so I received the application and I have the checks, and here's, here's what their file looks like. For every single, um, applicant, you're going to see a a spreadsheet just like this one, which has the applicant's name, uh, the address, the actual property owner, their address, uh, an email, and the engineering firm that's handling it. The check that came in was $230, here's your balance, and this is all the fees that get subtracted from that. An administrative fee, legal notice in paper, and your butters notices postage. So their current balance is, is zero, with a ZBA application, everything gets zeroed out. So, just for-
And then is it the next step to figure out where all those fees went?
One, one step at a time. I, I mean, I had to go download. We'll, we'll get into that in a minute. So, as you can see in this one, I'm working on Tanya Lane. So, I had to actually go back into, I have every single bank statement, uh, going back to when we switched to TD Bank, which was approximately 2021, from Citizens to TD. And I had to go physically go back within all our bank records and all our bank statements. Some of the, our deposit books, dates weren't put in. It's very important that we keep all the applications and applicants separate with their accounting. Say an applicant comes in and has a project, I'll, I'll give Joe for, as an example. You need to have completely different accounting setups for Three Ponds than you do River Run. You can't get those two things confused, because if you do, it's not proper accounting of what his escrow account looks like for that particular application. Same thing with like Mastriano. Mastriano had a site plan for his, the property out front, and then he's doing one for the one out back. Those need to be kept separate. So with each individual file, in each individual application, one of these spreadsheets will be created. So I can keep co, proper track. Now, eventually I'll be taking all the TEC invoices and making a copy, a copy two, copy to file. So every applicant will have a financial file, and within that, the spreadsheet and all the invoices attributed to this particular applicant. So with a few keystrokes of your mouse, you can have all your financial information right with the applicant in the applicant's file, instead of having that all spread out. So as you can see here, I've been working on Tanya Lane to get him his escrow account squared out. I've gone through and identified the original application, uh, the two checks that were received with that original application, the subtractions over here, the recording charges, these things are non-refundable, they've been taken out automatically. I've gone through here and identified every single deposit that he's made to, uh, the Tanya Lane account, uh, with check numbers included and the date that they were deposited. So now I'll be going through TEC's invoices, attributing every invoice to this column with your debit column, subtracting it from this number, and at the end of that, I will have an accurate accounting of what this particular applicant owes us. Or what we owe them.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
What, I just don't, yeah.
It's, it's been, it's been a long road to get-
And that, was this supposed to be happening in QuickBooks? Is that the?
The problem with QuickBooks is that it's an application that's not tailored to what you want it to do. It's tailored for a business, not a municipality. We're not making money here, we're just trying to keep track of money.
But we do have money, we have fees coming in. I guess just we can talk about it later.
Yes, it's, 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 it's a multi-stage process. What's going to go on behind me, I take the checks and I I want to come up with a process for the planning board where I can keep applicants accountable for all invoices coming in from all engineers. Okay, and as you can see on that consent agenda you're passing around, one of our applicants is $21 in the hole. So, I need to contact them, tell them they need more money in their escrow, and that's a way I can easily financially account for that. Right, and, and I'm coming up with a process that works, trying to come up with a process that works for the planning board that I can do in-house with proper accounting strategies in place.
And is, are you, is Julie helping?
No. A-team. Army of one.
Okay.
Army of one. Yes.
Okay.
So, I can even send you guys this file, it's relabeled, uh, planning board financial. Oh, where is it? It's in green, there it is. And in that, I have all the bank statements from 2021 to 2025. Um, I'll keep here all your consent agendas, here's the first one I created today. Your book order invoices here, and here is all the TEC invoices. Luckily, I could go to Jillian, and I got access to Andrea Bickham's, what, what was in her OneDrive. I have access to every single email that she had sent. Unfortunately, I don't think I can get access to Jillian's, it's because she's still using that original OneDrive to do things for the select board. So I think there's a mixing of files within there that I shouldn't be privy to. But she has no problem, I bet, getting information.
Yeah, I mean, she should be able to put all the planning board stuff in one folder and then share that folder.
Yeah, I mean, getting that and having to unzip them, which is a whole nother process, and download them. So, I've taken all the TEC invoices, I've had to unzip them one at a time, create a folder, put them in there. Uh, so-
Does the town have SharePoint or just OneDrive?
I believe we do have SharePoint as well.
Because ideally, there would be a planning board SharePoint that wasn't in anybody's account. It's just the town's account, and then you have access, we have access.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking to the-
Okay.
I used to play football with little digits that went across the buttons.
All right.
I think we're doing good for what we got.
Thank you.
So I, I will be going through later on next week and going through all these invoices and attributing them to an applicant of some sort. Getting that spreadsheet out to Tanya Lane, get you another consent agenda when bills need to be paid. And it's an ongoing process, labor-intensive, ongoing process.
Thank you.
I appreciate your patience.
If you do need help going through stuff, then we can help.
Well, so, some of it is, I, I have to go back and, and dig through files to prior to 2001, without TEC, I don't know if, how Steve Cummings sent his invoices. The only thing I could dig up in there was his 1099 from 2001, and he worked on a very limited amount of projects.
Hopefully that far back is-
Well, well, Tanya Lane, it started in June of 2001. Uh, 2021, right.
Okay, that makes-
June of, that's why the dates on everything is super important.
Yeah.
Because I, now, I need to go backtrack, I need to go chase that date, I can't attribute it checks or deposits that were prior to that date. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 16th minutes.
Second.
Any changes?
Nope, I tried.
I think it's not really that important. A minor correction, I think Crystal Kid's name has two D's and then it's resilience, planning and design. They're not engineers.
Oh, they're not engineers?
No.
You're right. So resilience, planning and design.
Yep.
Search and replace because they're in there?
Yeah.
And I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes, but allow Mark to make those clerical changes.
Any other? Doug, do you have a problem with, um, the last page there going on?
Yes, I, yes, I do, the only problem I had is I couldn't convince the restaurant to give me a valid gift card.
That was a fake gift card?
Yes, unfortunately it was.
Oh, man.
Oh, I thought you, you, he was going to get actual chicken tenders and stuff, no, I guess.
No, I had called the previous day and, uh, they had a problem with scamming on their gift cards. So you have to go in and pick one up. And Bruce is a wonderful guy, but he wasn't worth the ride that day. So I apologize, he will be getting a real one.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
You got all that? Sixth hour. So what are we looking at here? I saw this and I was not sure what the
Yeah, they-
ask is.
Sorry. This came in yesterday afternoon, just before I left the office, and it's a request by Sixth Hour to determine what their approval process would have to be to put up three of these pavilions overshooting spaces that exist. They have what's called Area 9 on the-
They have what's called Area Nine on the second to the last page of what was handed out to you. It's a former gravel pit. They shoot into a berm. Um, there are nine bays there presently. They would like to put the pavilions that are on the last page over those three, um, shooting spaces. And I would love to tell you that we could just do this as an expedited site review because they have an existing site plan, they comply with their existing site plan. This is a minor modification, there's no change of use. However, the combined space, and these aren't, these aren't buildings because they're not- enclosed, but they are structures and they constitute more than 1,500 square feet of space, and that's our limit for expedited site review. So.
Did they do it through a variance of the ZBA though?
No, no, no. Um, now- It's an approved use. We're just figuring out how to approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, because they're not, they're not changing anything other than putting roofs over these three bays out of nine, right?
So it's just to keep you out of the weather or something?
Is that just the calculation?
The calculation of the size of the pavilion, yes. The square foot. Now, the site plan review- regulation that allows us to do expedited is a regulation, and the board can amend that or waive that at their delight. So if they find there's a reason to.
So, so are, are the infrared heaters, they go on the top of the structure?
It's- It looked like they were behind it a bit and kinda facing to the person's back.
I, I, I think they're mounted on that, that, the wall. That's what I thought, but then it said overhead infr- infrared heaters.
That could be overhead as well.
They gotta be overhead, that would-
And then the wall, and then the wall lights. Because that was what I thought at first, but then when I saw overhead, I was like, huh.
Is that existing, like, gravel area?
It is.
Yeah, it's an existing shooting range.
Are we concerned about increase, previous area with the roof?
It, th- this would not constitute, it's a forty acre site at least. They just had to do an alteration of terrain to, uh, adding this.
Really trigger any-
It, it doesn't trigger anything at all, e, not even close. It's like point oh-
Yeah, it's pretty small.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so the avenue I see this happening is they come in, we do an expedited, the board just considers expanding the 1,500 feet in this instance to 2,300 feet, which is the combined area of this, of these two. Because it's so, it's so minor. It's so minor. We're not talking about changes of use, we're not talking about ch, even changes of activity on the site. It's simply- Putting a roof on it. Three of the nine bays that they have there.
Yeah, I mean.
If it was un-expedited, then what would that require?
Un-expedited, expedited is only for those instances where you're not contemplating a change of use.
Right.
It's a minor building expansion.
But if you went under the regular process?
You'd need to have an engineered plan.
Like, this isn't really-
Butters notices, engineered plan.
I don't know if it's really our concern, but I'm just wondering, like, why do they need gas tanks right next to where they're?
For the, uh, for the infrared heaters.
Oh, that's what's-
So that they can work them. I thought training outdoors was training outdoors, but- There are some people who they like, that they do, and, and I'm not gonna say- Oh, I had a nice email exchange with Bruce all about this. Yes.
More like a-
He says, he says when you're old, you can't, you don't have the circulation, he says, when you're old. I mean, it's, they're, they're trying to have facilities there that will appeal to anyone who wants to learn how to use their gun or enjoy using their guns. So that's what they're trying to accomplish here. And I, I hate the concept of a full site review for this because we could require that, but it just strikes me that this is why we have the expedited site review process.
Yeah.
And they're just slightly exceeding what our limits are.
Would we can waive that?
You, the board absolutely can waive that. You, you wanna do it for good reason, and in this case, the good reason is that it, it, it's a slight deviation, and these aren't even buildings, they're just structures.
That would, that like waiver would come when they officially present.
You, they have to come to a, just a public meeting. This doesn't even, expedited doesn't even require public notice to a butters.
Okay.
Because we're saying by virtue of it being expedited that they're not changing the use, that they're doing it on a site that is already approved with an existing site plan that is in compliance.
And this isn't in sight of any-
No.
Neighbors or-
No, nobody would, nobody would see it, and it doesn't change what's going on there. People will be shooting from a location they're presently shooting at.
Yeah.
And then hours or anything?
No change in hours.
Do we do anything right now or we just-
No, no, no. I just have to tell them that the board agreed to do expedited and that they have to come to any publicly noticed meeting.
Do we have to vote to?
At that meeting, you would have to vote, yes.
Okay, but for you to tell them that we don't have to do a motion right now?
Correct.
Does anybody have an issue with?
No, my feedback is absolutely.
I think it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, they're, they're-
Maybe they could come to the next one.
They're a good, they're a good neighbor, they're a good business in town.
Well-
I mean-
We had hoped they would build something on our side of, that was taxable.
They will, three pavilions.
I don't think that's really the equivalent of, um, what's in the other-
They are taxable, but-
Yeah, but it's not gonna push up their, their assessment very high.
It's something.
But can we invite them for the next meeting since we don't have much going on in the November 20th?
I will expect they will, they, Joe will say, when is the quickest I can get in?
Yeah, perfect.
All right. Hate to ask, but any other business? Or would someone like to make a motion to you?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Micro-
When's our next meeting? Oh, 20.
I don't know if you guys can sit in the-
Can I do that on my fingers?
He is retired, semi-retired, semi-retired.
I'm go, I'm gonna protest Six Hour.